Hope this is the last time we do this, we'll be live into September hopefully. I have to give you the order please, through the pledge of allegiance, is there a flag here folks?
Yeah.
Okay, let's just do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Full call. Kathleen Ramos.
Here.
Mary Ann Rosa. Mary Ann, she's here. Jonathan Ramsey, he will not be here. Anthony DeBono, he will not be here. From the Sensa.
Here.
He's here. Lou Rosna.
Here.
Paul Rinaldi. Victor Ryan.
I'm here.
Here. And me, here. One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, we've got six, we've got a four. And I have approval of the minutes of July 40th, and a motion for July 40th meeting.
I make a motion to accept the minutes during the July 20th meeting in 2020.
One second.
Second.
All in favor, so when they say, oh, any changes, additions or substitutions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Repose, abstain, motion passes.
I abstain.
Alright, Jennifer Report.
Yeah.
Well, just to place the course balance in the minutes of the meeting, and move right to Town Manager Report. John Gabbalos.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Interim Town Manager John Gabbalos. As a result of the recent storm, I suspended the requirement for town residents to utilize the transfer station for the disposal of vegetation only. This will remain in effect until Saturday, August 29th. On another note, our police, fire, communications, public works, park and recreation departments did an outstanding job in addressing all storm-related calls for service, community needs, and the cleanup of downed trees and branches, so our roads could be reopened safely. On a note here on our Watertown Town Hall, Burlington Construction, the general contractor, is still working on a punch list items. The architect's representative has told us that he did not feel the punch list was unusual for a project of this scope. The Board of Education partitions are scheduled to be delivered by the end of August, with furniture delivery scheduled for early September. The move-in date, which will be performed by the Board of Ed, is unknown at this time. The town clerk vault has been certified by the state of Connecticut. Some major outstanding issues are the ground floor continues to have water intrusion into the ground floor, and some modifications of our security system and potential upgrades. I want to take a moment to update you on our preparations for the upcoming presidential election on November 3rd. I've been meeting with the town clerk and our registrar of voters to determine what resources they're going to need to be absolutely certain all our registered voters have the opportunity to vote either in person or by absentee ballot. We have 14,500 registered voters in Watertown. Each will be receiving an absentee ballot application mailed by the state of Connecticut. Our town clerk will be tasked with the responsibility to process all absentee ballot applications and mail an absentee ballot to the voters. She is estimating between 7,000 and 8,000 absentee ballot applications could be received. Incidentally, if we look at the national average of the turnout in presidential election years, you'll find it's between 54% and 58%. According to our town clerk, Watertown has a voter turnout of approximately 80% during presidential election years. We should be very proud of that number. Now, per her request, I have authorized our town clerk to hire a temporary part-time person from mid-September through Election Day to assist in processing absentee ballot applications and absentee ballots. In addition, I'm authorizing whatever overtime that will be necessary to handle the extra volume of applications and ballots. I will continue to monitor the needs of both the town clerk and the registrar of voters as we move through this election cycle. Our primary concern will be that every voter in Watertown and Oakville will be able to cast a ballot, and that ballot will be counted. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbalos. I'd like to go to our public participation. Anyone that has any comments or questions, please unmute yourself. Ask question. Raise your hand, and I'll be at the computer.
Catherine Cameron, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody, please?
Catherine Cameron, Mr. Chairman, has a question.
Please, no one?
Catherine, you're on the line.
I can't hear you.
Catherine Cameron's on the line.
Okay, Ms. Cameron.
I am.
Yes, you are.
Yeah, Catherine Cameron, 31. So I have a couple of things. I see on your agenda 9C, the roadway safety audit. And I just want to point out, and I pointed this out to the Police Commission, that there's an issue with one of the crosswalk signs that you can't really see it. It actually had signs, it's placed right behind a telephone pole. And they did go back after I talked about it, there was signage on it that had to be removed, but it's still in a position where, depending on where you're standing, you don't even see it. So I just want to make sure that that's in the record with whatever that they do there. I know you can't remove it, but I think there has to be something added to it that would just draw somebody's attention, so that you know that it's there and you see it. It's really difficult to see, so I just wanted to add that. I would also appreciate when you talk about the bid waivers for Cotiola paving. I'd like to understand how much more that's, you know, what the price difference is there. And I would also like to understand why we would change Burlington Construction to Stony Brook on the moving of the basketball courts. I'd like to know why that's going to happen. I also, at the last meeting, had asked for an update on what's happening with the selection of a town manager. It's been quite a long time that that's been in the process, and I don't understand why the public isn't being, you know, I would think you must have selected your candidates by now and what the status is. So I asked for that at the last meeting, and I had thought it might be on the agenda for this meeting, but, you know, and when you're only meeting once a month, the whole summer's gone by without any update on that, so I'd appreciate to hear from that. I'd also like to comment that I really don't like seeing people in the town hall that's being called now without masks. I think if the public has to wear masks, that everyone who goes into the building should wear masks, and I find it very offensive, quite honestly. And my last comment, you've all obviously gotten an email from me. I think it's time for Chairman Nguyen to resign. I think it's ridiculous to live in the state of South Carolina and to be coming up here and bringing negative COVID tests, so that you can come into our town. I think that's ridiculous, and it's something that should have been reviewed in our charter and changed. I find the fact that we have a charter that allows such a thing to really be ridiculous. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Gabbalos, will you talk to the Police Commission about that sign that she's referring to? John? John, can you hear me? Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, I'm here, Mr. Chairman. I will address that.
Yeah, I do, I do. I appreciate it. And, yeah, we're gonna have a Town Manager, that's true. And I will resign when I'm ready. Anything else? Anybody else? Please?
I don't see anyone else.
I don't see anyone else.
Hearing none, I'm closing our public participation. So Committee Reports, as we haven't had any to do with this COVID issue, we will go right to new business. For Education, Ms. Crouly, are you here this evening?
Yes, I am here this evening.
Okay, I think I'm just gonna turn it over to you for your presentation, and we appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. I appreciate the council agreeing to have us come and present and provide you an update with the school opening and the financial implications outside of the parameters of our current budget. So to begin, I know that Dr. Harrison is having trouble getting into the meeting. He's having issues on his own end. Dr. Harrison, have you been able to get in yet?
I can get in audio, I just can't get my webcam to work. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you fine. Can everybody else hear him?
Yes.
Okay. Dr. Harrison, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I want to start by saying thank you so much to the Town Council. As you all know, this week is my last week of official meetings in my role as superintendent, and so I want to just start by taking a moment to thank you all for your collaborative work and relationships, and all of your support on my behalf, on behalf of their students and staff, and on behalf of the Board of Education as a whole. I want to talk a little bit tonight about our school reentry plan. Our reentry priorities were developed by our School Reentry Advisory Council, which included members of our Board of Education, leaders across the district, community members, our medical professionals, and community folks from across our district, so that we had a real wide range of opinions and ideas and experiences to add to our plan. We took our guidance directly from the state of Connecticut. Connecticut School Department of Education gave us 50 pages of guidance. We used that to develop our local plan for opening schools this year. Our reentry plan has three priority areas focusing on the health and well-being of our students and staff, the logistics and operations of our buildings, thinking about how we're implementing all of the expectations from the state and also from local health officials, and then obviously a focus on instructional delivery and looking at the most appropriate ways to meet the educational needs of our students. With that, I want to point out that we are really focusing on five areas of health and safety protocols and infection mitigation strategies. They are maximizing social distancing, frequent hand washing, and use of hand sanitizer, face coverings or mats that completely cover the mouth and nose, enhanced cleaning and disinfection of the person's face. And then cohorting of our students pre-K through 8. Based on all of the information that we have from the state, information, our current health data and information from our local health department, our decision for this fall was to, is to open full and in-person for our students K through 7th grade, and then to bring our 8 through 12th grade students back in a hybrid setting, where attending school in-person, tutoring, and then
and day. Or a three-day. Or a three-day.
So there are a lot of areas of expenses we've laid out based on our opening plan and based on the recommendations from the state as we're preparing for the fall. And Mr. DiSasio, our business manager, sorry, Tom, our business manager is going to share specific information about some of our anticipated costs. Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Harrison, and good evening, everyone. I'm gonna take some time to highlight the financial impact of our school reopening plan, and I'm gonna do that by breaking down some applicable costs into specific categories. So to start, I'll talk about staffing and salaries, which would be made up of the following costs. Custodial overtime, which will be necessary for increased cleaning and sanitizing protocols as outlined in the reentry plan. Four additional school nurses who need to be brought on board to ensure compliance with the health and well-being requirements of the reentry plan. Use of bus managers on every elementary school bus. This is necessary because social distancing is not possible on buses, and bus drivers cannot adequately monitor students while driving. Four building substitute teachers to ensure that each school has two building subs on hand in order to cover for anticipated absences, per the substitute plan outlined within the reentry plan. Three hall monitors at Watertown High School and Swift Middle School. Their role will be to increase hallway supervision to assist with moving traffic through hallways while enforcing foot traffic patterns that were developed as part of the reentry plan. We also are accelerating the timeline for our hiring of another network coordinator in the district. We're doing this to help manage with the significant increase in devices that has taken place, which has been ramped up to prepare for hybrid and distance learning scenarios. So we already had a distance learning scenario to close out last year, and as part of the reopening plan, we have to be able to shift between in-person, hybrid, and distance learning scenarios. In order to do that, we need to make sure all of our students are equipped with the appropriate devices. To manage those devices, we do need to have that network coordinator onboard for the start of the school year. And the final item in this category would be increased hours for part-time paraprofessionals at John Trumbull Primary School for lunch. Overall, those anticipated costs, the salary and staffing costs I just outlined, would amount to about $129,500 per month. The next category of expenditures is IT hardware and software. These costs are primarily to ensure that students and staff are equipped with the appropriate technology to shift between in-person hybrid and distance learning models as presented in the reentry plan. These costs consist of primarily Chromebooks and Chromebook cases that students will use to transport their own Chromebooks, well, the district's Chromebooks, but they will be loaned out to students for their use at home and in school. And also some software applications that need to be purchased to allow for students to access assignments and for teachers and students to interact in a digital classroom. These costs total about $347,000. The next category would be PPE and sanitizing materials. This category primarily consists of some of the things that a lot of people are familiar with seeing as businesses reopen and as schools reopen in the fall. We're talking about masks, face shields, sanitizing wipes, hand sanitizer, plexiglass, sneeze guards, gowns, and gloves. All of these items are necessary in order to comply with the reentry plan. The costs related to these items total to about $398,000. The final category that I've included here is equipment and furniture. To this point, that is primarily made up of a purchase of desks and chairs for the high school cafeteria. These need to be purchased to allow for students to sit in the cafeteria and abide by appropriate social distancing guidelines as outlined in the plan. And to this point, these costs amount to about $28,000. And so those are the costs that we have outlined to this point. There are some grant funding opportunities available to offset some of these costs. First, there is the ESER funding, which was awarded through the CARES Act. This amounts to about $175,000 for Watertown Public Schools. It'll be used to offset the purchase of IT hardware and software. And the application for this funding will be submitted this week. Additionally, Governor Lamont announced last week, he announced the additional coronavirus relief funding will be awarded to school districts to assist with fall operations. We don't know how much has been allotted to Watertown at this point, but it's anticipated the state will be releasing the amount ordered to each district sometime later this week. Finally, school districts and municipalities have been encouraged to apply for funding through FEMA to help offset the costs associated with the impact of the coronavirus pandemic. School districts have to apply for this funding through their local municipality, and Susan Poehn and I spoke about that a few weeks ago, and we'll look forward to working together and going through that process. So that about sums it up. If anyone has any questions?
Alright. Dr. Harrison, anybody, are you still with us? Are we going to continue? Is the board of education done? Do we have any questions from the council? Mary Ann, try to talk, I think you're muted, Mary Ann. Mary Ann, you're muted. You're muted. That's basically texture.
Tom, this is Mary Ann. I don't know about anybody else, but my my audio is very poor. And cut out. I'm muted.
Mary Ann, I will be happy to have, Mary Ann, this is Leslie. The Board of Education will be happy to submit what was discussed today in writing, so that you have that for those of you who have trouble hearing.
Can you hear me now?
Is there anybody else?
Yes, I have a question.
Council, Rachel.
I know we don't know, obviously, how much we're gonna get in all this different grant money, but Tom, do you have any idea what we're talking about? How much this will, the town will need to fund, or any estimates of that?
At this point, it's kind of hard to say, because the first category of expenditures that I outlined was staffing and salaries, and I broke that down by what we estimate it to cost on a per-month basis. And the reason I did that is because we're planning for a hybrid learning reopening, and we also have to make sure that we're planning for an in-person learning shift. But we also don't really know how long this is going to last. We don't know if we're gonna have to close down for a period of time, which may result in some of those costs going down. So to start, that's a cost estimate that could fluctuate quite a bit. And then on top of that, when you look at some of the grant funding opportunities available, the ESER funding, we could be fairly confident that the public schools will have roughly $175,000 to put towards the purchase of IT equipment and software.
That was
I'm having a hard time. I'm hearing something else right now.
And we're gonna send it to make sure.
Is everybody else hearing that? I think I'm getting like a delayed response from Mary Ann.
Yeah, I believe Mary Ann has a problem.
Okay, so I will, I'll continue. So I mentioned the ESER funding, the state funding. Nobody, I don't think that hasn't been, I'm pretty sure that hasn't been released to this point. It anticipated this week, but that'll be a little bit more. And then FEMA is the big one. Based on what I've read and the research that I've done, FEMA has indicated that they would provide up to 75% reimbursement for COVID-19-related costs. Now that is depending on what they're going to approve as COVID-related. So what I look forward to doing is working with Susan Poehn and the Town Finance Office and applying for reimbursement through FEMA to hopefully get as much reimbursement as possible. So the goal is to maximize the amount of funding that we will obtain through the available grants that are out there. But at this point in time, especially before school started, it's hard to say where we're gonna end up.
Can I ask one other question? I missed the number that you said for the PPE and the sanitizing.
Altogether, that's about $398,000.
Okay.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none. This Friday?
None, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add that we will send that information in writing for those of you who have trouble with audio.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, let's move on to We have B, motion. Want to put a charter revision, Kathleen?
Kathleen. I want to put the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Charter revision, the charter of the ballot for the ballot for a three-minute town clerk. It shall be with the Department of State, Charter Section 202A and D 601A, Move 606.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Staying, motion passes. Question two.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Question two, shall the charter be amended to provide for the appointment of members of the Conservation Commission/Inland Wetlands Agency, Charter Section 402?
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Rachel, did you
Sorry, that was an aye.
Okay, I'm sorry. Stay. Motion passes. Question three.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Shall the charter be amended to redefine the responsibilities of the Police Commission and clarify the role of the Police Commission regarding civilian complaints, Charter Sections 404C and C 3?
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Abstain, motion passes. Question four.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Question four, shall the charter be amended to provide for the finance director who will be appointed by the Town Manager with the consent of the Town Council, Charter Section 602A?
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Staying, motion passes. Five.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Question five, shall the charter be amended to update certain dollar amount of limitations as follows? A, increase the threshold for sealed bids to $25,000, Charter Section 602C. Increase the limit for emergency expenditures to $5,000, Charter Section 704. C, increasing the threshold for requiring a town meeting for new appropriations or appropriations from the reserve fund for capital and non-recurring expenditures to $50,000, Charter Section 704. D, increasing the threshold for requiring Town Council approval of inter-departmental transfers to $5,000, Charter Section 717.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Staying, motion passes. Six.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot. Six, shall the charter be amended to redefine the role of the Public Works Six, shall the charter be amended to redefine the role of the Public Works Department with regard to maintenance of town-owned buildings? And vesting some of that role in the finance director and purchasing region? Charter section 603, new 707.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes, question seven.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot. Seven, shall the charter be amended to modify the timing of second and subsequent budget referendum? Charter section 703.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question about that, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I'm just wondering, and maybe Attorney Justin can, can comment on the language in section 703. It says, if such budget is not approved, then a new budget and referendum may be proposed by the council. A new referendum scheduled not less than 15 days from the previous referendum. I'm just wondering why the word "may" be proposed is there? I assume that it would need to be proposed if it fails. And so then my question is, again, sort of a second question. Is question seven specific enough for the voters to understand the change that's being proposed to section 703?
Rachel, one of the things that you're also going to do tonight, hopefully, is approve explanatory text. The prior language of the charter required that the referendum had to occur within 45 days, which in some cases turned into a very tight timeline, not easily attainable. The language was loosened up a little bit to give a little bit more leeway as to when that second and/or subsequent referendum would be held. So what we can do in doing the explanatory text, we can explain that in more detail.
Okay, then who writes that explanatory text?
That's done generally by the town clerk, working with the town manager and the town attorney, and then gets approved by the town council.
Okay, because I just remember when I was on the last charter revision, when we did change the timeline, we did it to make sure that the referendum occurred and hopefully the budget passed before the school year started. Because as many remember, we had a number of years where we went into the school year without a budget. So do you foresee that being a problem potentially?
Again, I, I wasn't the attorney for the Charter Revision Commission, nor was I on that commission. However, my understanding of the reason for it is that there were times when that timeline became overly tight and that there wasn't sufficient time for the council to, and/or the Board of Ed to do their work.
Anything else? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
Opposed.
Close, stay. Oh, so five. Okay, motion passes. Number eight.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot. Shall the charter be amended to modify which town officials will be bonded? Charter section 408, new 607.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes, number nine, question nine.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Question nine, shall the charter be amended to revise the provisions of the municipal employee retirement plan to represent current status? Charter section 301.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes. Question ten.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Question ten, shall the charter be amended to shorten the probation on former town council members taking positions profit with the town to one year to make it perform ethics ordinance? Charter section 301.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes.
I abstained.
Stay. Motion passes, five, number one. Number, question eleven.
I move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot for charter revision. Question eleven, shall the charter be amended to replace outdated or make the charter language gender neutral, remove references to the judge of probate and health department, and to make other technical corrections? Charter sections 101, 201, 202A, B, D, and E. 203, 204, 205, 206, 207, 301, 302, 304, 305, 306, 308, 309, 311, 312. 401, 403, 404A, E, F, and I. 406, 406A, two, 406B, one and two. 501A and B, 502, 503, 504, 601A, B, and C. 602A and C. 603A, 604, 604F. And new G, new 608, 701, 702, 703, 707E. 709, 710, 802, 901, 905. I move that the approved question, oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
You have a second, second. Any discussion? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes, last one, a big one.
I move that the approved questions be submitted for a referendum to be held in the 2020. Electors approving each question shall vote yes, and those opposed shall vote no. Polls shall open, be open between hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. I further move that the office of the town clerk is authorized, if necessary, to prepare and distribute concise explanatory text regarding the questions for the approval or disapproval of the 2020 charter revision as approved on August 18, 2020 by the Watertown Town Council meeting. Agenda to be submitted to the electors at the November 3, 2020 referendum vote. And the town manager is authorized, in such official discretion, to prepare and distribute additional explanatory materials regarding said questions. Such texts and explanatory materials to be subject to the approval of the attorney and the town council and to be prepared and distributed in accordance with sections 9-369B of the General Statute of Connecticut Revision of the 1958 Amendment.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Any discussion? Any discussion? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close.
Close.
Who's that? Identify yourself. Um, stay. Motion passes, I did not, did not identify the one that said oppose. Just, just move on to.
I move to approve the resolution in support of the 2020 STEAP grant application for Main Street roadway safety audit improvements.
Have a second.
Second.
Roy Cavanaugh, I'd like to bring you up for some questions. Roy, are you there?
Roy Cavanaugh, Director of Public Works.
Okay. Give a little explanation on this, Roy.
Last month, the governor reactivated the STEAP program, Small Town Economic Assistance Program, which creates small grants available for certain community activities for economic assistance within, listen to these families. Watertown does qualify under the STEAP program. And it has the program awarding grants up to $500,000. This grant is limited to $128,205. We do have a project that we want to submit for, which is an op-ron of the Main Street roadway safety line. It would comprise three different components. The first component would be the installation of rapid rectangular flashing beacons locations on Main Street in Watertown where the pedestrian fatalities occurred the last few years. Part two would be the increases, my condition, the signalization of Woodruff and Main Street to accommodate an additional signal head for the safety of the vehicles exiting the convenience store gas station, and also the installation of pedestrian crossing, across Woodruff Avenue, which would be connected to a new sidewalk, which is along the west Philly side of Main Street, which is Route 63 between Woodruff Avenue and connecting to the old Starbucks. The STEAP grant itself is a 50-50 grant. In other words, the town has to match a dollar-for-dollar basis up to $128,205. Those funds expended, the total project cost is estimated to be just short of $300,000, a good portion of which is already budgeted or allocated for either these purposes or similar purposes. So we're requesting a resolution to support the grant application. We are given 30 days to put it together. It's been extended to August 28th, and we should know by September 28th whether or not we're awarded it. We're hopeful that if we are awarded it, a portion of the Main Street improvements could be hit later on this fall. Any other questions, Mr. Chair?
Questions? There are none? Is there, Dr. Cavanaugh, a second?
Second.
No, no questions, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes. C.
I move to authorize modification of a previously granted bid waiver granted to Coachella Painting on March 16, 2020 to increase the bid items by 25 cents per square yard each step.
Okay, Mr. Cavanaugh, for everyone that is interested in this motion.
The bid waiver, which was granted to Coachella Painting back in March, was a continuation of the bid items that they competitively made in 2018. The actual work that we're doing this year, and two items we're looking to adjust are the milling of painting items rather than milling and trucking items. The original 2018 bid calls for the milling removal of up to two inches of asphalt on these roads. The current program, some of the roads are going to be milled up to three inches, another road's up to four inches. So because these specific, these two specific items were not contained in the original bid or bid item that the bid waiver occurred, was granted for, the question came up whether or not that would be covered by the bid waiver. And what I decided to do was apply for a waiver to err on the side of caution. So when we do, if we do get audited under this particular item as part of our annual audit, we would be covered as far as authorizations to perform the tube test, which is the milling of three inches as opposed to two inches, or four inches as opposed to two inches. And there would be no question that these items would be covered by the total bid waiver. The total value of the waiver could vary depending on the number of streets we have done this year, from a few hundred to a few thousand dollars. The total amount that we're looking to hoping to get done is over a million dollars. So this is more or less a tactical adjustment to the bid waiver to accommodate these two items, which are relatively small in the scope of work.
You have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Questions? Questions? Anybody satisfied? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes. D.
I move to authorize the bid waiver for the relocation of the basketball courts from the former Hemingway Park School to Swift Middle School. For work performed by Stony Brook Construction in an amount not to exceed 110,900.
You have a second?
I have a second.
Discussion, Mr. Cavanaugh.
Mr. Chair, Roy Cavanaugh, Director of Public Works. The work was performed, the work was already led before by Stony Brook Construction. Stony Brook Construction is and was a subcontractor to Burlington Construction. It was a general contractor on the Hemingway project. At the beginning of the Hemingway, excuse me, the Hemingway conversion to Town Hall project. At the beginning of the project, we were also doing a conjunction with the Hemingway pond dam removal. As part of the Hemingway pond dam removal, the Canadian DEP agreed to pay for the relocation of the basketball court. Basketball courts were not part of the original contract for the Hemingway conversion to Town Hall. So at that point, we were going to have Burlington do the, the general contract on the work. The Stony Brook was actually going to do the work. DEP has paid the town of Watertown for the work, and the money has been deposited in the bank. So given the fact that there appeared to be some contractual and/or payment issues going on with Burlington for the Town Hall conversion, we felt that at this point Stony Brook has not been paying for the work that they did back in April. So what we're looking to do is pull that portion of the money's on the budget and make it back to the Stony Brook. It should be noted that the contractual issues, there was never a change order received on the budget, and the prices that were, excuse me, the prices that were proposed to be paid to Stony Brook are in fact new prices that were part of the original bid for the project. So this is more or less a bookkeeping thing to get Stony Brook paid.
Any questions? There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes. E.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between mine items to close out for fiscal year 2019, 2020.
You have a second.
Second.
Discussion. There are none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes. F. I'm sorry, yes.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds between mine items for fiscal year 2020 through 2021.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Here we are. No. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes. G.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing tax refunds.
You have a second? Any discussion? None, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Stay, motion passes. H.
Tom, do you want to do these one at a time or all together?
Yes.
Do them all together or one at a time?
Yeah, I think we've, we've thought of before, we can just put them all together. Paul?
Okay. So H, I move to appoint Scott Tierman. 259 Bead Circle Watertown is a regular member with the Conservation and Innenbutlins Commission to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Harold Olson. I move to appoint Pierre Moran.
I move to appoint Pierre Moran of 53 Hamilton Avenue, Watertown, as a regular member of the Conservation in Innenwood Commission to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Michael Genovese for a term to expire January 2023. I move to appoint Zaga Antonetti of 397 Kimberley Lane, Watertown, as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission for a term to expire January 2025. I move to appoint Daniel DeVito, 106 Penridge Drive, Oakville, as a member of the Watertown Housing 30 to fill that vacancy created by the resignation of Harry Olson for a term to expire January 2022. I move to appoint John M. Donahue of 319 Thomas Tinn Road, Watertown, as a regular member of the Park and Recreation Commission to fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Robert Tissina for a term to expire January 2021. I move to appoint Marissa Mancini-Cuvallo of 97 Joshua Town Road, Watertown, as a regular member of the Water and Food Area for a term to expire January 2023.
You have a second.
Second.
Any discussions?
Amazing. Amazing.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Upstate. Motion passes. To conclude this, before I leave, I'd like to say to Rachel, on behalf of the entire Town Council, I wish I were for your loss of your love of her.
Thank you very much, Tom, to everyone who's reached out to me. I appreciate it.
Take care. Give our love. Have a motion to adjourn.
One more.
All in favor? Media adjourn. Hi, everyone, we'll be live next time, hopefully.